We'll call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of November 4th. We'll note that all commissioners are present and the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? I have a question regarding item C, which is the approval of a hook, hoist, roll-off truck. I noticed in reading the materials that we didn't take the low bid. Mr. Zurov, would you comment on that?
President Johnson, Commissioner, there were six bids. Two lower ones were Mack truck and international truck, but they both had a gall breath body hook lift system. The gall breath body hook lift did not meet all of our specifications. Currently, we have the ample roll body and that did meet all of our specifications, so we figured it was best interest to the city to accept the Western Star with the ample roll hook lift body. The gall breath had numerous items in the specs that it did not match, did not meet.
So, in the opinion of you and your staff, the two low bidders did not meet specifications?
Correct. And we recommend the Western Star with the ample roll hook lift.
Thank you, though. That's the only question I had. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda?
I'll move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. We'll go to tab four and we're going to begin item A there. We'll hear our quarterly municipal court prosecution presentation by Ms. Becky Grant. So, welcome.
Mr. President, City Commissioners, my name is Becky Grant and I'm an associate attorney at Evil Top Sickler. And I've been in charge of managing the municipal prosecution contract for the past year as well as the first three quarters of 2013. The purpose of the memorandum that I submitted to you in this presentation is to update you all on the status of that contract as we come to a close on the third quarter of 2013. As always, please interrupt me if you have any questions throughout the presentation. As you are all aware, we began prosecuting for the city of Dickinson on January 1st, 2012. The second quarter presentation was before this commission on August 5th, 2013. Our firm has opened and prosecuted 1,378 files and currently we have 547 active files. This slide offers a comparison of the amount of criminal citations issued in 2011, 2012, and 2013 for the months of July, August, and September. As you can see, the number of criminal citations issued for all represented months has increased for all represented years. This slide offers a comparison of the total revenue generated from the criminal and traffic citations between 2011, 2012, and 2013 for July, August, and September. The total revenue generated from traffic and criminal citations has increased for all represented months, for all represented years. Incidentally, I just received the October numbers and it came in at just under $50,000. The highest revenue recorded for municipal court prior to today was just over $40,000, which happened earlier this year. So, that represents a significant jump. We continue to handle municipal prosecution matters by appearing in court three times per week. Our scheduled court times and types of appearances are listed on the slide. Additionally, I've continued to meet with Attorney Coling each week at the conclusion of municipal court to discuss ongoing municipal court matters. During the third quarter of 2013, our firm handled six bench trials and obtained convictions in all of those trials. The slide indicates that there's currently two misdemeanor jury trials pending, but since the time I created that slide, we obtained a conviction by jury on one of those trials. The other trial is currently scheduled for early December. We've continued to provide the commission with information regarding the remand process that our firm started in January of 2012. We've remanded 236 cases since taking over the municipal court contract in January of 2012. Those remanded cases have generated $111,110 for the city of Dickinson. Looking at the 2013 numbers alone, we've remanded 92 cases during the first three quarters of 2013 and that has resulted in $47,545 for the city of Dickinson. Currently, there's several criminal complaint requests that were recently submitted by officers. Those complaint requests will be reviewed shortly for charging determinations. Additionally, I thought it was worth mentioning that several of the many zoning code violation complaint requests that we received over the summer have been served and recently resulted in convictions for the city over the past several weeks. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to field any questions of the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Are there any comments or questions?
I'm curious to know, can you give us a couple of examples of what kind of zoning convictions you're seeing?
Sure. The ones that we recently prosecuted were for having RVs parked in zoning areas where that wasn't permitted. So, those have been the most common.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you for appearing and giving us your quarterly update.
Thank you.
The next scheduled item is a presentation by Dickinson citizen Gary Zent and it's regarding some traffic accidents on State Avenue. And following Gary's remarks, Chief Dossinger has prepared some information that he will share also regarding State's Avenue. So, Mr. Zent, welcome to the meeting.
Good evening, President Johnson, City Commissioners. My name's Gary Zent. I live on 8th Avenue Southwest and recently, there's been some developments in our area as far as traffic, noise, things like that. Our backyards are right adjacent to State Avenue. It's a great street. I use it every day, but the concern is actually threefold: safety, the noise level, and then future roads like this that are going close to developments. And if I can, I'd like to approach the commission and hand out some pictures. The pictures that I just handed to you was an incident that happened at our home in June of 2011. It was a vehicle that lost control and hit, come across the medium and hit our garage. I'll just give you the particulars of this. You're probably wondering why I didn't bring this to you guys' attention at that time. You know, I thought it was probably just something that happened once in a lifetime type thing. On October 20th, I believe, at 1:00 in the morning, or roughly 1:00 in the morning this year, the same thing happened to our neighbor to the south. And we're just really feeling concerned about the safety of us living there and trying to have some kind of protection installed on that berm to keep this from happening and hopefully avoiding somebody that lives there from being injured. Like I said, on October 20th, 2013, about 12:50 a.m., it happened in our neighborhood with my neighbor to the south. I said threefold, basically, to express concerns for safety. The noise levels have increased right on that corner and it's mostly truck traffic that has increased that. I really swear that some of these trucks don't have mufflers. They're just, they're really loud. And then, like I said, for going forward when we have developments or have bypasses put in that are adjacent to developed areas. There are seven lots that are along this stretch. It's basically from Diamond Drive to 8th Street Southwest that would have this or could have this situation happen to them. There is a dirt berm there. It does help keep some of the traffic on the street. Like I said to Chief Dossinger, some of the incidents, they don't even see because these vehicles come up and they don't quite come over the berm, but they manage to get out in the wintertime. And it's all because of that curve on State Avenue and typically excessive speed. The law enforcement does a great job of patrolling that street, but they can't be there 24/7 either. And so, we're running into this. Possible solutions, I try to, when you have a problem, have a solution at the same time. You could go ahead and install a guardrail along State Avenue there, all the way along, which would help. It would help deter the vehicles from coming over the berm. Still wouldn't take care of the noise levels that we encounter at this point in time. And like I said, I only imagine them to get worse. I'm not an engineer, but I would think that if a cement retaining wall was installed on top of that berm all the way along from 8th Street to Diamond Drive, that would keep the traffic on the street when they lose control and at least deter some of the, not only property damage, which you can fix, but yeah, the biggest thing is the safety aspect. And some of these areas have kids in their backyards and, gosh, that's a scary thing if something's going to come over. I understand that the, when I talk about the cement wall, I'm thinking five or six-foot wall. And again, I know that has to be designed, engineered. And I also know that you guys aren't going to give me an answer tonight. This is more of awareness of what's going on right now and the potential of avoiding something happening in the future. The, if we had something like a wall there, like I said, it'd take care of the noise factor. It would also be, that's the southwest entrance to the city, so if you had something nice, it kinda is inviting to the city, shows the progress of the city. I compare it to the cement wall along State Avenue by State's addition north of the press. It doesn't have to be that fancy, but I'll tell you, that wall, I've been in some of those backyards, you can't even hear the traffic on State Avenue. So, something like that in my mind. The other part to this is, I know this all costs money. I don't feel that if anything is done, that it should be assessed to the adjacent property owners, and here's why. That development, Hart River Forest, was there before State Avenue came in. And with that being said, I think, you know, I'm not blaming anybody. Hindsight's 20/20. But now that we have a history of what's gone on there and what is happening, I think we need to do something to help protect the people there. And that development was owned by the city. It actually went back for back taxes. When I built my house there, I bought it from the developers and shortly afterwards, it went back to the city for back taxes. So, that's how that was all sold and taken care of. Again, my whole purpose of being here is to bring this to you guys' attention. I know none of you were part of the city planners when State Avenue came in or was built. There were three alternates or three plans to that. My understanding, they didn't go with the other plans because of the elevation, the increase for truck traffic making it up the hills. So, we got what we have in place now. And again, it's a great, great road. It's just that times, when you have an open stretch like that, it creates temptation for some drivers. So, that is what I have. My neighbor is here and has some pictures, if you want to see them as well. That vehicle ended up in their yard. From what I could see, it rolled three times. There are signs up down there for vehicle noise ordinance enforced, but again, and they're not out, you know, it's not all truckers, but they use their jake brakes and everything else there. So, I just wanted to bring it to your awareness and hopefully we can do something to avoid any future problems. Any questions for me?
Well, Mr. Zent, maybe we could also see the photographs that your neighbor has and we'll ask Chief Dossinger to work, come on up here and let's hear from him and then we'll get an opportunity to ask questions of both of you.
My name is Tanya Jorgensen. I live in the house that the car just rolled into. I'll be very brief. I just, I'll share these with you guys. You can look at them. I just wanted you guys to see, this car rolled through our yard into our covered deck. I mean, it destroyed the deck. It pushed the barbecue around. The sad thing is, you can see where the car left the road. My head was right here with my husband. We were sleeping right up against that wall. He missed that wall by 15 feet. I don't sleep so well anymore. Anytime I hear screams, squealing tires, jake brakes, or, you know, tires locking up, it wakes me up. I wake up multiple times a night now. That's all I have to say. I'm really concerned and I'm scared now. And we don't even let our nephews or our kids, friends' kids play in the backyard because of that road and how fast the traffic goes.
Okay, thank you, Chief Dossinger. You've done, I think, a little research here, so.
I did. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. After Mr. Zent came and seen me a couple of weeks ago, I pulled some statistics. As you can see there on the pin marked, that's the problem area right there on South States. The two residential areas that have been mostly affected by that has been 770 and 794, 8th Avenue Southwest. Right there is a picture, the southeast view, 700 block of South States. You can see the vehicle tracks still present there from the accident that occurred in the end of October. Right here is the north view, 700 block of South States. You can kinda see the rear of the yards, 770 and 794, and you can see the wheel depressions in the grass there yet. Basically, right there is the intersection of Diamond Drive and South States. Basically, south of Diamond Drive is a 700 block and 800 block of South State Avenue. And you'll see in a few minutes, I pulled some statistics as far as accident information south of that intersection. Another picture here, 700 block of South States, south view. Right there is the curve that's causing a lot of the issues, southeast view, 600 block of South State. Right here, from 2010 to the present, these are the total accidents that have been investigated between the 600 block and 800 block of South States. Those are all the accidents investigated by the Dickinson Police Department, North Dakota High Patrol, and the Stark County Sheriff's Department. As you can see, there's been a total of eight that have been reported and investigated. Two of those involved injury. Breaking down these accidents, as you can see, two of those were single-vehicle accidents. Two of those reported were single-vehicle accidents that left the roadway. Three of them involved two vehicles and there was one non-reportable accident, which means that damage was less than $1,000 and there was not a full accident report completed. Citations that were issues related to those accidents, you can see three involved citations for care required, three involved citations for DUI, and one involved a citation for reckless Enforcement activities, stops, these are not related to traffic accidents, but these are proactive enforcement efforts. In those two blocks, as you can see, there's been a total of 85 traffic stops completed since 2010 in that two-block area.
Chief, can we get you to put the map back up?
Yep.
Chief Dossinger, so it's from 8th Street to Diamond Drive? That's the problem in that particular area?
Basically, the seven, yeah, basically, between north of 8th Avenue, north of 8th Street to Diamond Drive.
Okay.
Basically, that's a 700, 800 block of South States.
And these accidents, they're all southbound? These serious accidents?
I can't say that for sure, if they're just southbound or not.
Chief, and the A-pin there, it's the back of the home that, I mean, if you stretch it out on that lot, it's how far from that curve there? It's not 50 feet?
I don't have a distance from the house to the roadway, but the A-pin there marked 794.
But they're coming from up there? They're coming through this way? They're not negotiating that curve?
Sometimes, correct.
Chief Dossinger, you mentioned in the citations, there was none for speeding. Could you talk about care required and the others that were cited?
Sure. Basically, care required is a citation issued when a driver is not operating enough care and operate his motor vehicle, prudent to the conditions. Maybe he's traveling at an excessive speed and there's snow or ice on the roadway and it caused an accident. That results in citation for care required. If speed is too fast for conditions.
That's going to be the truck route, too, now, on State, right?
Well, I think we'll see more truck traffic on that road in the future.
Okay, are there other comments or questions for either Mr. Zent or Chief Dossinger?
Thank you.
Thank you. I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to discuss this matter with Mr. Zent and as I became more, or developed a better understanding of what he was communicating to me, it seems to me that, you know, the solution to this problem, as he presented, is more of an engineering solution than a law enforcement solution. And have you guys had any chance to kinda think about what a possible solution or solutions might be to this?
Mr. President, Commissioner, Chief Dossinger and I have talked about this location and the two incidences that we've discussed this evening. The North Dakota DOT does have a program for highway safety program to address any safety issues, but typically intersections in town. And I think this situation would fit the outline of their program. It's a grant application program where we might be able to put safety features in place to prevent this in the future. The uniqueness of this situation is that typically, we put safety features like that to protect vehicles from hazards, not to protect structures from vehicles. So, it's a little unique in that we're looking at it from the different, a different angle, but I think some of the same solutions might be available.
Do you know how that grant works as far as matches required or parameters of it?
The application didn't talk about a matching portion, but it's typically smaller projects. It wouldn't be a million-dollar project that they would have a grant for, but the application is just submitted to the DOT by the middle of December.
That is an urban road and most urban roads are 80/20, but the safety part of that, I'm not sure either what the split is or, you know, what the cost share would be depending on the type of project you're looking at.
Have you given any thought as to the cost at all, you know, between guardrail or wall? It's probably too soon to have done any numbers on that?
No, we haven't crunched any numbers on it yet.
I would think it would have to be cement because if they're going through wood fences now, it's not going to stop them, that's for sure. Speed bumps aren't going to work. Lowering the speed limit won't work if they're using it as a racetrack.
No, it would have to be something substantial, but from the city's standpoint, we need to be careful that we're not introducing another hazard to a motorist that was driving safely and just happened to leave the roadway to.
Well, as Mr. Zent said, they're not expecting a solution tonight, but when you look at these photographs, they make a pretty compelling case that the status quo shouldn't be an acceptable option. So, I think, why don't we, say, give you about a month to discuss this more and maybe and come back to us in about two meetings and give us some alternatives on what you think could be done? Does that sound fair to you? Is that enough time to?
What was the December deadline for application?
I believe it was December 16th.
Would we want to look at the first meeting in December? So, that if we wanted to proceed with?
Yeah, what would be the date of our second meeting? That might be?
Think it would be the 16th.
Think you can come back in two weeks, then?
Well, if we, first meeting in December would give us time then, right?
Yeah.
That's a month.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we can look at, you know, possible funding options, you know, exactly what it's going to be. To resolve the issue is hard to know, but I think we could look at possible funding opportunities with the state and give you an answer by then, I think.
Yeah, I think the engineering solution is more important than the funding solution right now. It's good to hear that they do have a program and we can go after funds there, but I think we have to have some sense of what the alternatives are from an engineering perspective. So, we would put this on the agenda for the first meeting in December. Mr. Kessel?
December 7th.
Oh, okay. Mr. Zent, does that sound like an acceptable approach?
That's great. I was going to bring up the aspect of DOT also, since it's really used as a bypass as far as helping with the financial aspect of it, but I'm glad to hear that you guys, you know, already have that in mind. So, any help that you can give us for, like you say, the safety, the wall would take care or help with the noise issue, it'd be great. And I just want to say thanks for allowing me to speak. I watch you guys all the time on Channel 19 to try and stay informed and I know you all have day jobs and sometimes you guys have some pretty long meetings, so I didn't want to add to it. Okay? Thank you.
You did just fine. It's an important issue. Thank you. Okay, we have some timetable items, so we're going to go to the timetable. We have some rezoning petitions. Mr. Kurtan is out tonight and Mr. Coling will handle these, so we'll just turn it over to you, Mr. Coling. You can take us through the three zoning petitions.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The first item is a rezoning from agricultural to general industrial. This is a 25-acre parcel located in the southeast section of town. This is actually in our ET This is actually in our ETZ area. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this matter and had a public hearing on it and recommends approval. There was one condition attached to the ordinance, and that is that prior to any building permits for this property, the applicant would obtain approval of a final plat pursuant to city code. Mr. President?
Mr. Coleen, what is the ordinance number?
I'm sorry, this would be ordinance number 1530.
1530? Okay. You've heard Mr. Coleen's introduction. At this time, we'd ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding proposed ordinance number 1530. If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? No one from the public? Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I move to approve first reading of 1530.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next matter is a rezoning ordinance, a rezoning property from agricultural to planned unit development. This is an approximately 400-acre parcel of property, which is commonly known as the Pinecrest Edition or Pinecrest Commons. There are 27 conditions that are attached to the ordinance. This ordinance will govern the development of that Pinecrest subdivision. We anticipate that at some future date, these conditions would be included within a planned unit development agreement that we will reach with the developer. Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this matter and held a public hearing on it and recommends approval with the 27 attached conditions. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. I assume this is 1531, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, if there's someone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance 1531, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? No one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Move to approve first reading ordinance 1531?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next matter is a rezoning ordinance, rezoning property from rural residential to general commercial and general industrial. These properties are located within Great Lakes First Edition, or First Subdivision. This property was originally platted as BK subdivision, and the rural residential area was included as a buffer zone between general industrial property to the north and rural residential property to the south. The developer has come back with a replat, or new plat of that property, as Great Lakes subdivision, and they have included within that development a earthen berm that would separate the general industrial area from the rural residential to the south. And in the view of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Mr. Cortan and his staff, that would provide a substantial barrier, a substantial enough barrier between the industrial property and the rural residential to the south. So Planning and Zoning did recommend approval of the rezoning of these properties. And there are three conditions attached to the rezoning that provide for that earthen barrier, as well as its irrigation and maintenance by the developer. This would be ordinance 1532, and city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance number 1532, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public. Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1532.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? No discussion, will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. The next timetable item is 515, so we're a little early for that. We're gonna go back to the non-time table agenda to Item C, and that's to hear a presentation regarding the Rough Rider Commission by Michelle Kovach. Well, this doesn't look like Michelle Kovach.
I am Matt Hines with the Rough Rider Commission. Michelle told me, or got me to do it.
Okay.
I'm here, the Rough Rider Commission wishes to extend the Fourth of July celebration by increasing our fireworks display. This would be a great way of saying welcome to Dickinson with the influx of the new residents to our community, and also a way of showing them that we appreciate having them. And we are requesting $10,000 from the city to help assist with the $20,000 budget expenditure for the 2014 fireworks display.
Do you remember what we gave last year?
I think it was $5,000.
Did we include the Rough Rider Commission in the 2014 budget that we passed?
No, they were not included in the '14 budget. This would be an unbudgeted expense.
Do we contact the Rough Rider Commission during budget time and let them know that we're doing budget hearings?
I don't recall if we were contacted, the Rough Rider Commission this year or not, in regards to our subsidy meeting. That's the one you're referring to, President Commissioner? Did you receive an invitation?
No.
Well, I, just as an aside, I'd suggest we put them on our invite list, and it would administratively make matters a little simpler. Okay, well, I see Michelle Kovach is here now. Did you want to add some comments?
No, I'm Michelle Kovach, President of the Rough Rider Commission, and we always appreciate your continued support with the Fourth of July celebration of the Rough Rider days. As we all know, everything is increasing in the town, and we're having more people, and, you know, we try and keep in budget as much as we can, and fireworks go up every year, and so we would, you know, just ask your assistance stuff with the budget so that we are able to provide a bigger and better show than we normal, normally have. It's kind of hard to compare when you have everyone else shooting off about the same places we are, but that's what we're looking at for 2014.
And last year, we had provided 5,000 additional?
Last year, you?
Or 5,000 total?
Gave us 5,000, and we came up with 10,000, so we budgeted 15,000 last year.
I'm assuming, might not be a good assumption, but is Mrs. Johnson back there? Yeah, I'm assuming last year, we paid for this out of the hospitality tax? Do you think that's correct? Well, can you give us two weeks to mull your request over? We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting in November?
Sure.
And we'll give city staff a chance to make a recommendation. You're not gonna order those fireworks prior to mid-November, are you?
They're ordered July 5th every year.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it's already been ordered?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So, Mr. Kessel, you getting all these things to put on the future agendas?
Taking good notes.
Well, why don't we do reports? It's not quite 515 yet, so, Mr. Kessel, what do you have to report on?
President Johnson and Commissioner, there's two items on the report. The first is development fees update. Attorney Coleen has been dealing with this topic from its inception, so he actually has the update on that for you this evening.
Mr. President Commissioners, as you'll recall, we had a meeting last week with respect to development impact fees on Porter Second subdivision, and there were some changes that the Commission wished to make with respect to two lots within that subdivision, specifically since those lots did not receive direct sewer service from the improvements put in with this project. The charges, or the Commission requested that the charges for, that were attributable to sewer connection would be withdrawn from those two properties. Mr. Kubis and his staff were able to go through the documents, the invoices that we had with respect to that development, and adjusted the numbers with respect to those two lots and the remainder of the development. I did distribute a revised assessment list for Porter subdivision, which was at your desks, for the two lots that were adjusted. It resulted in about a $10,000 to $12,000 reduction in their total assessment. That amount was then redistributed to the remaining lots that received an assessment for this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Any questions for Mr. Coleen?
Were you able to contact the two properties and let them know what the new assessment was, or?
Yes, Commissioner Altman, I did have a conversation with both individuals, or an email conversation, so they were made aware of what the new assessment number was.
Okay.
Mr. Kessel, anything else to report on?
We just had a thank you note that was provided. The, I participated in the German Marshall Program several years ago, and we are lucky enough to continue that participation in Dickinson, where they send several ambassadors from the European nations to the United States. We did host a contingency from various European nations. Mr. Cortan provided a presentation to them in my absence, and the thank you letter is for assisting with that day. Mr. Cortan did a nice job.
Okay, anything else to report on?
Just a quick update today, we held the State of the City address at the Elks Club, sponsored by the Chamber and the Dickinson Press. We had four presentations by the, one by the public schools, one by DSU, one by the hospital, and then one, of course, by President Johnson. Very well attended. It was an inaugural event. I think they hope to continue that event annually, and I've received nothing but positive remarks about the presenters, and maybe one dissent with regard to my moderation skills, and I should keep my day job. That would conclude my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions for the city administrator?
I was there, it was very well done, and very informative. Thank you.
Anything, anything else? Okay, well, then we'll go back to the timetable agenda. At 515, there's a public hearing for a special use permit, and we'll ask Mr. Coleen to introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. This resolution provides for a special use permit to Charbonneau Car Center to expand their parking facility into a lot that is currently zoned R3. That is a permissive use under our code. It entitles the Commission, if you so desire to place any conditions upon approval of the special use permit that you wish to do. There are eight attached conditions in this resolution. Have to do with screening of the property, as well as making sure that it is limited to employee parking and customer parking, and not something that is, makes the lot available for vehicle sales and that sort of thing. Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this matter and held a public hearing on it and does recommend approval of the special use permit contingent upon the eight conditions noted in the resolution. For your record-keeping, this would be Resolution 47-2013. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Any comments or question? Well, just meant this, excuse me, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open, and anyone wishing to comment on the special use permit may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by city commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 47-2013?
Move to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
There's a motion to approve in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're down to public safety. Is there gonna be a presentation in the Public Safety Center?
Commissioner President Johnson, I should have, at the time of agenda changes, announced that there will not be a presentation on the Public Safety Center. That has been postponed for one meeting, so at the next city commission meeting, there will be a presentation by Mr. Paz on the Public Safety Center.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to Tab 6, Engineering. And Mr. Kubis, we have several items here. I think we'll let you introduce them and take us through them.
I can give a short introduction. Mr. Coleen's probably worked a little bit more with these easement vacations, but there was also a backlog of some of these easement vacations. A lot of these come through as lots are consolidated and between the lots had a utility easement. So the process is that the utility companies are contacted, sign off on the vacation that they don't have and won't need that easement for their facilities, and then it's forwarded on to the city. So these five utility easement vacations are presented for your consideration here. They've probably came into the city over the past several months. They need commission approval to be formally recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Mr. Coleen, any other comments you'd like to make?
Mr. President, the only thing I would add to that is we are following state law as to the vacation of these easements, and there is a rather extended process that is required under state law. Specifically, it's required to have this resolution to call for a public hearing. We're then required to publish the notice, and then at the second meeting in December, we'll come back with these easement vacation petitions for you to formally vacate the easements on that, for each of these properties. So there are, there will be another resolution where you will consider these.
So these are essentially, as I read them, all the same? They're all vacations? And I'm assuming the first one, then, is Resolution 48, and they just go in numerical order?
That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
Okay. And these do not require public hearings at this time?
They do not, Mr. President. We'll come back for a public hearing on these in December.
Okay. All right, you've, we have to take these each separately, but before we do, are there any comments or questions by commissioners? All right, well, then let's begin with the first one there at Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Edition. It'd be Resolution 48. Is there a motion regarding this one?
Move to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in the second. Any discussion? No discussion, will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll go to the second one there, that's in Country Oaks Estate, Second Edition.
I'll move to approve, 49.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next one is on the Fisher East Side, Second.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 50 in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The fourth one there is in Kilwine's Third Edition, is Resolution 51.
Move to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that motion carries. And the final one is in Houston, Second Edition. It is Resolution 52. And the final one is in Houston, Second Edition, it is Resolution 52.
Motion to approve?
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Are there any reports from Engineering?
I do have one short report. We've been working on standard drawings and standard specifications for the city. I think Mr. Coling had mentioned this a couple meetings ago. Right now, where we're at with that, staff is reviewing that internally, city staff. We hope to have that for your consideration on the November 18th meeting. I think, Mr. Coling, this has to go through a couple hearings or a couple readings of that to be adopted. So our hope is that, without major changes, first reading would be on the 18th, second reading would be December 2nd, with the plan of implementation at the first of the year. So all construction next year would be built towards one common city standard set of details and specifications.
Do our developers and builders, are they aware that we're, cities doing this?
As we've been meeting with developers and their consultants, we have been mentioning that to them. We also plan in between adoption of the standards and implementation on the first, that we would have a meeting with developers, contractors, consulting engineers, rolling it out, showing them how to access that on the website, and answering any questions at that time, so.
Any other comments or questions? Any project updates that you might have?
Well, we have a few ongoing ones. We just had a meeting with the DOT today on the bypass project, with the DOT and the contractor, moving forward to get some late-season construction in place.
Now, when you say bypass?
The bypass on what will be 30th Avenue, the interim bypass at exit 59.
Exit 59, all right.
And they're coordinating some efforts to get that first mile between the interstate north of the 21st Street completed this year still. So they've been working some pretty long hours this late fall. We've had some meetings with the DOT, again, on the railroad separation. That project just got some environmental, kind of the official sign-off from the DOT, so that project will be moving into the design phase this winter.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Kubus? All right, thank you. Then we'll go to Tab 7, Public Works. We're going to have a presentation by Wink on the landfill, and we'll ask Mr. Zurov to give them a more proper introduction.
President Johnson, Commissioner, as you recall, we hired Wink Associates to look at our solid waste management. One of the reasons was, along with the growth, it's reaching our capacity in many areas, one being our baler and our landfill, and so Wink was tasked with looking at different options and feasibility study. And so they've put all the recommendations together, you should have a white paper, and you do have one book, President Johnson, of that, of the results. Tonight, given the presentation will be Kevin Magstead with Wink Associates, and Howard Tressel is his backup for tonight.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. As Gary said, this is what the booklet looks like, there's one, I think it's in Sean's office, so if you need to look, that's fully detailed with regards to that. And then you've got the four-page white paper, I know, we were told to keep it within two, but there's so much information in here, it's a lot, it's very difficult to do that, so. I was here in September to discuss, you know, the interim report with regards to this study, and now we're just going to go forward with the final recommendations. Feasibility study, as Gary said, is, it's to evaluate baler versus loose fill at the landfill, all the political and economic conditions with regards to that, also looking at potential new locations for an inert landfill site, evaluate potential improvements at landfill operations, recycling, waste collection, scales, needs, locations, et cetera, and at the end, update flow projections and determine remaining life expectancy in the inert and the MSW landfill. MSW is municipal solid waste. Here's the updated map, that shows where Dickinson collects their garbage from. So it's a huge area in the region. Here's current flows, as we've seen them coming in, in the past, from 2008 to 2012. As you could see at the end, on the side on the right, talking about the percentages of the total waste flows, 58% is household garbage, then it goes down from there, 19% construction, 10% inert, and drops off from there. Using the 2035 City of Dickinson Comprehensive Plan, that allowed us to put together projected waste flows going into the future, as you could see, they go, they peak off somewhere around that 2022, 2020, somewhere in there, with regards to all sides of these. This is a chart that shows landfill expectancy. The different lines look at compaction in the landfill. Currently, the compaction in the landfill using the baler is roughly 1,000 pounds per cubic yard. The reason it's down at that level is because the baler is old, you can increase that to a certain extent by a new baler. Going to the top or the way bottom volume of 1,400 cubic yards, that would be by using a heavy compactor out at the landfill, and probably using a loose fill system. And as you can see, the differences in the compaction really adjust the number of years of life with regards to the landfill. This is the same with regards to the inert, and again, it's all with the volumes or the compaction levels. Here are some of the operational issues that are going on. The first one says scale. One of the reasons with the scale is just truck traffic, sometimes it can get jammed up and it goes out on the streets. So when you talk about scale, you could possibly reroute it, there's potential problems with the existing scale. It's tough to get maintenance on it because it's an above-ground scale, let's put in the ground with inadequate access to get down and keep, you know, keep it in top condition. But as you go through, you could see the number of issues here, as it talks about screening, one of the big issues is medical incidents have gone up from five in 2010 to 26 in 2012, so things have really gotten higher. We will touch on a lot of these as we go through this presentation. Here are some of the things we evaluate with handling increased waste flows, as the oil patch and everything else just looks at those numbers that we looked at previously. Installing a new baler, and bale most of the waste, and loose fill remaining, that's something that is done now. All oil field waste is loose fill, that is being taken out the landfill at this time. So you are doing a combination at this time of bale and loose fill. Number two is install a baler and operate day and night shift. We eliminated that almost immediately from, as you could see on the bottom, you have a hard enough time getting employees now to fully staff the landfill, so we're saying, just throw that off, because you'd need more employees and it'd be difficult to get them. Number three is install a new baler, expand baler facility and bale all MSW except for oil field waste, that's kind of what you're doing now. And number four is loose fill, all waste at the landfill. Economic evaluations, these are the four scenarios we came up with. Developing this feasibility study, it's plus or minus 30% in the capital cost, and annual O&amp;M costs for all four scenarios. Number one is no baling facility expansion, basically staying with what you're doing now. Number two, expand baler facility, add a larger baler to handle larger, all larger capacity. Number three is baling facility operational shutdown, and loose fill all waste at one site. And number four is baling facility shutdown, and loose fill all waste at two separate sites. Let me expand on number four a little bit. When I say two separate sites, is one of the things that's decreasing the quickest is your inert cell, that's where your volumes are really going down quickly. So we're saying, look at potentially purchasing 20 acres off-site somewhere, and using that for your inert site or your inert waste site. The top three, as you'll notice, we can go into here, this is starting on the scenarios with costs. If you look at the total capital cost, the third line down on scenarios one, two, and three, one of the major issues is there, is in a purchase of 235 acres of property at $10,000 an acre. That's a big chunk of that. When you look at scenario four, that's only purchasing 20 acres with regards to, you know, just finding a different site with, you know, to do the inert cell. The costs, one, two, and three are fairly similar, cost four is a little bit cheaper. When you go down to the bottom is where you start to really see O&amp;M costs. One and two are very high, number three, all loose fill is down there lower, and these are annual O&amp;M cost dollars. And number four, you're at 2.4. Wink recommends scenario three, and we'll go on forward with that. First of all, here, let's look at, in the economics, we're projecting tipping fees, if we go and add those costs from the previous slide in and look what tipping fees need to go and be in the future. Scenario one, you're looking at tipping fees for the MSW between $63 and $67 a ton, and the inert at 33 to 36. If you take a quick look down on that second chart, those are the current tipping fees, at $40 for the municipal waste, and 35 for the inert. So then jumping back up, scenario two, you see 63 to 68. Scenario three is as close as you can get to your existing tipping fees, and that's the 100% loose fill of what you got out there. Scenario four jumps it way up, back up into the 40s again.
Can you explain tipping fees?
Tipping fees are when somebody comes in and hauls and dumps in your, that's what you're charging per ton for anybody to haul into your waste. Interesting thing up on the tab, on the second from the bottom, tipping fees revenues have grown or gone up from basically 555,002.8 to 1.3 million and 12, so that's a 250% increase in five years.
Sir, how much of that increase, how much would you attribute to us raising the rates, and how much is just volume?
Volume, I would say is probably the majority of that, I don't have that exact figure as what percentage is what, something that, I can get that number for you, that's.
Howard, would you, you know? Okay.
We could get that number for you. Here's our recommendation, our first preferred scenario, scenario three, loose fill. One thing is a capital commitment of that 6 million, that does not, that is not a one-time shot, that can be done over time, as needed. So another issue that needs to be, it needs to be looked at heavily is manpower for litter control. But one thing we'll see as we go further back, if the baler facility is abandoned, and you look at the total number of employees that are required for the landfill, you're going to be about the same as you have currently, people would just have different jobs, and part of that would be waste collection, or keeping paper picked up. You'd get the increased compaction with this recommendation by compactors, and it would extend the life of the landfill. You do have one compactor in place now, part of this recommendation, as you'll see later on, is adding another compactor for this. It's the lowest annual O&amp;M cost, one thing you could see with the O&amp;M costs over scenario four to scenario three, in three, 2.7 years, you would get it paid back, the difference between the capital costs on all of that. Longest life for future operations, decreased medical because you're not baling, that's where the majority of your incidents are, is at the baling facility, and it keeps all operations on one site. Baling facility design, age of current baler, manpower reductions, and already loose fill oil field waste, so you do have some loose paper now, just because of the oil field waste already being dumped out there, loose fill. Scenario two, expanding the baler building and going with a larger baler would be the second preferred one, that's if you have too much politics with regards to litter control and other political reasons.
Can we go back to scenario one, please?
Yes, sir.
At scenario one, this one here, is that buying 235 acres or 20 acres?
235 acres.
235 acres. And do you have an idea what the cost of fence 235 acres?
Yes, that's all figured into that. In the detailed book, it has fencing, it has everything all in, that $6 million that we had in there. So that's, yes, that's all figured into that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
$30 a foot?
Yep. So I brought him, he's had 30 years of landfill, he can pop that stuff off real quick. Here's the recommendations, other waste disposal operation recommendations. The 235 acres, and I have a map showing, coming up later, that shows the 235 acres that we recommend if possible. It can extend the landfill out to more than 75 years. One very important thing to remember here is permitting a new landfill at a separate site right now is almost impossible. So if it, all, you could try to keep everything in the same location and just expand from there, you're better off. Plant minimum of four rows of trees on the east side of the landfill to prevent screening, as well as litter control. Fencing helps, trees are fantastic for litter control, it also helps hide, you know, anything around it. Install a new scale at the landfill with radioactive drive-through scanner and camera, this is just installed up at McKenzie County right now, where all the trucks have to do is drive through here, you don't have to send anybody out for exposure or anything else with the Geiger County, they just drive through, and the registrar, any radioactivity registers within the scale house. Construct a new landfill building for equipment and employees. One thing, and working with Public Works in the discussions, it would be nice to have all that equipment at the landfill under a roof for easier, the life would be lasted, or would extend it quite a bit longer on that. There's the 10-foot fence on the east and north sides for litter control. We also recommend to lower the existing leachate force main that goes to the wastewater treatment plant. What this allows is for year-round operation. Currently, you have freezing issues, and you have to shut it down and store it on-site. This, the Department of Health, North Dakota Department of Health Solid Waste Division would really appreciate if you could dispose of it year-round, just by dropping it down deeper in the ground. Purchase additional portable fences for litter control, and develop a citizen drop-off site near the landfill scale house to keep citizens out of the active landfill area, so they wouldn't have to drop, drive down into the pit. Here's the employees, I don't know what happened here. This is the map, basically, let me just kind of let you show this around. This is the map what we propose with regards to the purchase, you're looking on the north of the landfill, as well as east of the landfill, property just adjacent at this time. Here's the employee recommendation, you could see way on the left, currently, there's between nine and 11 employees between the baler facility and the landfill. If you look at the recommendation under the scenario three, you're looking at eight up front, and in going off into 2017, with the volumes increasing, you can go up to nine Here's equipment recommendations, one clarification here, wheel loader currently, all we're saying is you don't need two new wheel loaders in 2014, it just says state status quo all the way across. Scraper, the recommendation with one and the one star is there needs to be a more powerful scraper to handle the dirt requirements that are out there, the existing one just doesn't handle it well. Landfill compactor, that's where we're looking at increasing, one compactor can stay in the MSW, one compactor could stay in the inert, and then also a dozer to help with daily cover requirements and everything else would be at a purchase. For some reason, the maps didn't show up. Basically, what this talks about inert expansion, there's existing opportunities to expand at the landfill right now. Basically, it's just horizontal, in some deep valleys already, putting inert over areas that are already MSW. So there's lots of options for expanding right in the So there's lots of options for expanding right in the area and all.
And Kevin, one of the things with the inert landfill expansion, that it doesn't need to be lined where you can expand the other, uh, municipal solid waste needs to be lined, uh, I guess double lined, and it's really, real expensive. So, uh, I guess airspace in a lined landfill is much more expensive than the inert.
Yeah, in a, in a municipal solid waste landfill, you need, uh, two feet of compacted clay done in six inch increments, as well as a synthetic HDPE liner over the top of that, where an inert cell does not need to be lined. It can have a clay bottom, but there is no, a lot less requirements with regards to that. Here's what we come up with recycling. When you look at capital costs and O and M costs, it's not recommended. Uh, one thing we looked at is possibly converting the existing bailing, bailing facility to a material recovery facility. But one thing that we did talk about with regards to political options and everything else is add more drop sites and more capabilities that you're existing and add, you know, add future drop sites without, or across the town. Also, one thing that's coming through the Department of Health right now is household hazardous waste facilities. You're going to pretty much in the coming years be required to be able to take these at some location rather than putting them into the landfill. This talks about current collection routes and recommendations. Um, currently, on the residential side load, you have two full-time, one part-time. Proposed routes, we'd say have three full-time. Uh, residential rearload, one, staying with one. One recommendation we have because of injuries and everything else is try to avoid rearload, get a new, you know, automated truck as you're changing out, and keeping your rearload for future potential, uh, recycling. Where you can send it out if you have a day where you can have people just leaving stuff along mattresses and furniture and other stuff along their streets, the rearload is much better for that than any of the automated. On the commercial side, uh, front load, we, we say just go full-time with both of the routes rather than one full-time and one part-time. Uh, commercial side load, just stay as is, and roll-off trucks stay as is. Questions?
Well, that's a lot of information. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
I do have one. Ms. Megstead, I know you weren't around to see this, but when we did the baler building 20 years ago, I suppose, we did it because we were told that's the best way to get a long life out of our landfill. Now, now we're saying that compacting in the landfill itself is the best way to extend the life. Can you help us understand that?
The issue is you get a baler, and those were, you have it for two things, one for compaction because they get up to about 1,100 pounds a cubic yard, which is good, but the newer ones are now like 1,400. Now, you're at the end of the life of the one that you have, all right? And it was mostly there because of compaction as well as litter. You still have the litter issues because now you're getting the loose fill from oil field, and you really can't bail that stuff because there's other stuff in there that you, you don't want to have to expose your employees to. So the issue is, right now, you have a baler that is starting to take a lot of, of maintenance, right? And it is, it's difficult to do, and it was sized at a certain flow rate, and now you're 250% more than what you were when you first bought that thing. And so that's one of the biggest issues. You're going to need almost like two to do what you're doing now if you're going to continue with the bailing. So buy these new heavy compactors, I know they're fif, they're $500,000 each, and yet usually in compaction, that's what he was showing in the, the length of the lifespan of the landfill. If you have it at 1,000 pounds, you have about an extra five years. If you have it at 1,200 pounds, you have another five years beyond that at 1,400 pounds. That's the 500,000 for that compactor usually pays for itself in six months. It's like my waste management and all the landfills, they go to, buy those things just routinely.
So I'm, I think I'm hearing you say we can get equal densities either way, we can just get better flow by going right to the landfill. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the, the density issues that we've run into is the voids between the bales is where you're not going to get the full compaction that you will.
Okay.
So you would get a consistent density across the whole face of it because you don't have those voids between the bales that, you know.
And your waste flows are increasing so rapidly, whatever you put in now, is it going to cut, is it going to handle in five years from now?
The other general question I'd have, you briefly talked about recycling with glass and plastic. Have you put any numbers to that? Have you put?
It's in the report.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the main report has all of that. We just tried to
Sure.
Give you a synopsis.
And, and you think we can do it in Dickinson?
They're very good ideas, but they are, people have to realize they are a subsidy. You guys will have to subsidize it to some degree.
One of your line items up there was, uh, was shingles as a big part. You know, we, we do, we have had a couple storm events over the past few years. Are shingles, uh, are they a recyclable item?
No.
No?
No.
They cost too little to try and recycle.
Okay. You said our waste flows are increasing rapidly. Can you give us, can you quantify that? I mean, our waste
250% in five years.
In five years.
President Johnson, if I may, that, um, at, uh, some, we, I don't think we've increased our rates that much so that the tonnage and the bales produced is the same as what was talked about with the dollar amounts.
Right.
And if, remember too, that, um, uh, the City Dickinson landfill doesn't just take Dickinson waste, you know, that the area that Kevin covered is, uh, yeah, brings in a lot of different communities, and it's estimated, uh, like he has in his introduction, that we're bringing in, uh, waste from a population of about 40,000, 39,000 population. So that's, that's our area for our landfill. Yeah, that's the population we're dealing with right now.
And the population projections for the future, we took out of your documentations on your comprehensive plan as you're going forward. So we didn't just dream numbers up, we took them out of your, your information.
So kind of based upon what you're seeing and looking forward, do, uh, NDU's, NDSU's projections appear to be, um, overstated, understated, reasonably right on? I mean, are, in your view, would we, how are we tracking against those projections?
I, I think we're tracking fairly good right now. World politics is hard to understand what's going to happen if OPEC turns around and drops oil down tremendously. Who knows what's going to happen? It could shut us down real quick. It's hard to say.
Well, but assuming oil prices stay, uh, above the level needed for development to continue, it appears we're tracking reasonably close to the NDSU projections?
Yeah, Dr. Lystrich at NDSU, I've worked with him on other stuff in the past, and he's very good. I've always been, been amazed how he can project things pretty, pretty in line.
Well, I have to say, I've been very impressed with NDSU in most of my life.
One of the, uh, comparisons we have is the bales produced, for example, in 2008, it was 19,000, 499, and in, uh, 2012, which is less than this year's, uh, it was 28,000 bales. So we went from 19,000 to about 28,000 bales in four years.
Okay. Other comments, questions? And the scenario that you've recommended, if we did it all right now, was like about, was it 6.2 million dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
You're putting your hand down the equator.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's kind of all it.
Yes.
Based on, as you see costs today, of course, yeah. And, um, how soon do you think we need to start doing this?
The life on the landfills, I think, the inert, you've got 20, 15 years, I think, and, uh, MSW scheduled out like 30, 25 to 30 right now. It's not something that needs to be done immediate.
But the baler
The baler is wearing
That's, that's probably the most critical thing.
And I think we're looking at about $850,000 with the barrel and associated, you know, stuff right now to replace it with in-kind baler. It's about $850,000.
So if, if we replace that baler with another baler, uh, how long would we be committed then to bailing to kind of get our payback out of that piece of equipment? 10 to 15 years? Okay.
One of the things, President Johnson, is usually if you have a bailing facility, you don't run the larger compactors. And, and what, what we're doing now is we're bailing and we're loose fill compacting, so we're doing both. Um, uh, you know, and Commissioner Jackson, when you said that the baler, you know, would give you your densities, and I think that was good at the time, but they, I don't think there wasn't any intent to buy a compactor. So the baler was your compactor, and you didn't have that equipment at the landfill. Uh, now we have both.
Well, the, the issue we're going to struggle with is, you know, on our list of infrastructure projects, we have 162 million dollars of them. This project isn't on that list.
Right.
And for the current biennium that we're in, um, we're short at least $21 million that we have to find alternate financing, either through some other public funds that we can borrow or through private funds or a combination thereof. So we almost have to push a project like this into the next biennium, which is essentially, you know, two, summer of 2015, summer of 2016. Do we have the latitude to do that?
Yes. Yes, you do.
You think we do?
Yeah, yeah.
What if, we would have to purchase a new baler, though, Mr. Meg?
Yes, you'd need to buy that baler to keep up where you're at because as Aaron says, he's, he's trying to twist every nut and bolt and everything as tight as possible right now. So that needs to be, you know, updated.
I'd like to make one provision. Essentially, what you're doing then is it's not so much a need to all be purchased at once, it has to be more of a direction. If you're going to go ahead and try and do the, the baler, fine, but now you're going to be committed for quite a while. If you're going to go to the loose fill, then you don't need to do that, but then you need to do these things, not necessarily all at once.
Okay. So we, we do, okay.
And President Johnson, I think we have budgeted about a million dollars for a new baler. Uh, if we decided not to bail it, we could use that funds to start looking at our loose fill options at the, uh, landfill, say a, a scale house or some other facilities, um, and still stay within budgeted dollars.
We don't have a million dollars budgeted in O and M in the land, the solid waste fund, do we, for a baler?
I believe so.
I missed that.
Right, Tina?
I believe that's over two-year period, but, oh, 10-year period.
But it was, it was for, to be financed, correct?
Oh, okay.
But it, but it's in, I mean, it's in the line item, but it's
So there's a, a hundred thousand dollars in this?
Correct.
Okay.
In 2014.
But it's
A million dollars over 10 years.
It's assumed it'd be financed.
Right, and I, and I guess financed cash, I know it's a lot different, but
It is.
If it's financed, that dollars can also be financed to build a new scale house, correct?
Yeah, right. Okay.
Well, I think the important thing to remember too is that this actually does have a payback on it and actually generates revenue. We've got a lot of projects that we're going to spend money on that we'll never get money back on. At least this one has the potential to bring the revenue back in.
Well, I think the engineers are, are correct here in their direction to us that really the key decision for us to make is decide which direction we want to go. Do we want to continue down the present direction, or do we want to change direction and go to the loose fill? That's probably the first thing we really have to decide.
Yes.
And then from there on, it's tactical.
Because as you saw, our second recommendation is just a larger baler.
Yeah.
As you increase, you know, volumes.
So, and we're not going to make that decision tonight. I mean, I, I think we better, and several of us should try to read through, I think, the total binder, it's, uh, we've done a lot of work, and, um, we should afford, uh, well, we should, uh, do our duty, I guess, and read the book.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions?
Is, is that binder in a format you can send us?
Yeah, we can get you an electronic, that's not a problem. Yep. Would each of you like a copy electronically?
Yes.
If you send that to me, I can distribute it.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's done. Okay.
I think I'll read the binder.
We got tabs in there so you can see the sections, it's much easier than trying to go page by page.
And I'm interested to see what Mr. Zurov, that's his department, too.
Well, I, I guess one of the things is our current baler is about at the end of its life, and we're, um, uh, bailing things about as fast as we can and, uh, in the time allowed it during the day. Some days, of course, we have overtime in trying to get the bales, uh, done, um, especially if there's a holiday, uh, it, uh, I think we're at 250 tons a day where four years ago, we were at 40 tons. So, I mean, that's the volume we're looking at. Um, and, and I, and I guess the one decision that I think we, needs to be made is whether we replace that baler or not because there's a lot of parts right now that we need to put into it, um, and I'd hate to put a lot of money into it if we were going to get rid of it right away. Um, and, uh, so I guess that's one of the issues.
President Johnson, I have a question for Kevin.
Yes.
If, if we were to get a new baler, um, and a larger one to accommodate the size, the amount of, uh, materials that we're having to bail and such, would that fit physically into the existing building?
No, and that's part of this recommendation when you look at it, is expansion. We got plans in here of the expansion of the existing Bailey, excuse me, baler building to get that to fit and be, you know, operational and allow you to do your operation as needed.
Follow-up question then. Um, one of the other options would be do two balers of the existing size. Would those fit in the existing building?
No. You know, we looked at double shifts, but then finding employees to use the, the one baler basically 24 hours or whatever as needed to keep up. You'd save the money on the cost there, but it's the employee side.
And the one thing about, when you were asking about the tipping fees, the tipping fees are established at a level that should pay for itself back. By other words, this, they, we put these landfill fees out there, so it should be a paying proposition, not the other way around. All right? Like the city of Fargo takes in their $35 a ton, and they're putting in $4 million into their general fund year. You know, I think we're working the same thing with McKenzie County, and, and most of the landfills are that way. So it should be looked at as paying as it's, as it's going.
It's just the upfront capital, but then it'll pay itself back.
But then you could pay it back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or questions for the engineers?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation and the work that you've done on this. We appreciate it. Mr. Zurov and Mr. Kessel, what do you see as timing on this? I mean, when would you expect that we would reach a decision on, you know, the strategic decision on whether we continue to bail or, or continue to, uh, or go to loose fill?
I think Mr. Zurov and I can, uh, sit down and, we, we've had this discussion already to a certain degree. Not sure if we're ready to make a, a final recommendation to the City Commission with regard to their report. Um, um, it shouldn't take long because we've had several discussions. I would say by December, uh, by second meeting, our first meeting in December, we can bring you a recommendation as well.
But I, that's, and that's when you feel timing-wise, we have to have a decision here? Because I'm thinking also about, you know, the time it'll take us to Because I'm thinking also about, you know, the time it'll take us to, you know, read the, read the materials.
Well, if the, yeah, that's the time for, I think it would take us as staff to present something to you. If you need additional time to absorb the materials as a City Commission, we can certainly postpone that to a longer date. But, and what I'm talking about in terms of a direction is that strategic direction that they spoke to, baling versus loose fill.
When we, when we get to that point, and maybe it's here, I'd like to see repayment terms scheduled, how that shakes out.
Not only repayment, but as I said, generation of funds for the general fund, too. That would be, see what a profit margin would be and how long that is.
We'll include those, both those items in our recommendation.
Okay. Anything else on this item? All right. Well, we'll try to, let's say by the end of the year, we'll make that strategic decision, okay? So if we can do it sooner than the end of the year, that's fine, but.
And President Johnson, I guess I look at this as the landfill in being an enterprise fund, then it paying its own way, you know, and that we might have to borrow a small amount of money, but that these operations will pay for itself.
My concern comes to borrowing that small amount of money that we may have tacked out or, you know, tapped out our credit card and may not have funds available to us. But I know, as you're all well aware, we did have an opportunity to meet with the governor and lieutenant governor and better present the situation that Dickinson is facing. I think the governor's had an opportunity to hear from Williston and will be hearing shortly from Watford City, probably some other communities. And I think they intend to talk with some of the counties in the Bakken area, too, that, I think, you know, the development is just a lot more intense and especially cost intense than I think the legislature anticipated. And so hopefully, we're going to maybe see some other avenues available to us in terms of getting funding. It's a huge challenge, I think, for all the communities in the Bakken area. And communities like Dickinson are very important because coming into this, we were already regional centers for various things. And there's no better example of that than the landfill. They showed the map, I think, what is there, twenty-three communities that we serve? So it's, it's very important that we keep the landfill functioning. I think it's also fair that those other communities, you know, pay a fair share in fees. We're taking the risk and the management here, all that. So, yes, we ought to be able to generate some monies that flow back into our general fund for operating this. But again, to keep up with all the development in the area, that's real key, that we do have a good plan here and we keep this thing operating. But we will be challenged to find all the capital that we need to do these things. Okay. Is there anything else from Public Works that you'd like to comment on?
Nothing more. Our capital projects are progressing. In looking at one of our last meetings with both our water and wastewater engineers, the spring of 2014 is going to be busy around here, so. But everything's progressing as it should.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Zurov? All right. There are no community development reports from a commission perspective. I did send you emails out with the performance review form for Mr. Kessel for this year and asked that you have those back to me fairly early in December. And we would present those to Mr. Kessel at the last meeting in December. And without, if there is no objection, I've asked Commissioner Altman to be, or work with me on reviewing Mr. Kessel's compensation. And the two of us then would bring a recommendation to the full commission, if that's acceptable to the three of you. Okay. Are there any other commission reports? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
President Johnson, commissioners, my name is Leon Mulberg. I live at nine forty-one Thirteenth Street West in Dickinson. My purpose for being here this evening is that I met last week with Mr. Scott Olleen on Wednesday about the scenario that was taking place with respect to the railroad overpass. He then informed me that there had been a completely new plan, which he printed off for me, and he said that it would be brought up at this commission meeting. And apparently, that was in air. As you see, I notified two managers from UPS to be here to at least to hear what's going on. I guess I need an update as to what is going on and what is the schedule.
Mr. Kubus or Mr. Kessel, do you?
I might be able to shed a little bit of light. The State DOT, after the city provided the recommendations to them, that this City Commission voted on, came up with two other options with regard to access. The baggage road, as they call it, was troublesome specifically for Dickinson Ready Mix. And they were trying to find ways, because it took a lot of land from Dickinson Ready Mix that they had planned to use in the future of that, of those operations. So they came up with several other options, two of them specifically to have less impact on Dickinson Ready Mix. And they presented those to city staff. And we looked at those two different options. I believe those must be the two that you have in front of you, Mr. Mulberg.
I don't know. One is up by the Old Hardee's, which is a frontage road, and the other is a proposed city street going, coming down the street east of the old KC Club and then curving under the.
That's correct.
Overpass with the cul-de-sac right in the front of the old Ready Mix office building.
That's correct. That's one of the two options that were provided, as Mr. Mulberg has shown on that map. There was a second one that essentially had the same area on the west side of states and on the east side, it just provided a slightly different route. But it got to the same cul-de-sac that's on option one. The fire department, police department, looked at those. We had a tight turnaround time from the State DOT. They selected the option that Mr. Mulberg has just shown you as a recommendation to move forward with. So that was, that's the update that I can provide on. And I'm not, obviously, they haven't contacted you.
No, not at all. In fact.
So, excuse me, Mr. Mulberg. So that is different from what we saw two or three meetings ago?
It is. The DOT did not accept, I'm not sure what the proper terminology there is, they heard our recommendation and they're trying to come up with additional ones. And they'd like us, they wanted us to choose from the two options that they chose from or that they produced after our recommendations were made to them.
So.
So you, as a body, have not seen these two options, that, the one that Mr. Mulberg has in front of you?
So, Mr. Kessel, what I'm hearing you say is that we haven't formally seen this yet. We will formally see it?
Correct.
And what about the public?
They have a plan to discuss these options with the public. I can't share the details of that plan, but I was under the impression that there would be a public hearing with regard, or a public meeting, I should say, with regard to this option, with the adjacent property owners at a minimum.
Mr. Kessel, I believe the email from last week, they did give us those additional options, but management noted that HDR should look at the additional access options that would connect Hollywood Boulevard with properties on the west side of State Avenue. So at the decision of the management, item nine was not completed. So they are giving more time to look at the environmental studies and additional options and meet with the city and property owners for comments before they'll proceed.
Right.
I spoke to Mr. Lang a week ago today, about an hour and twenty minutes on the phone, discussing the ramifications of the plan that you had approved coming through and with a potential solution, if in case that was actually going to go forward. That's when I met with Scott Olleen to let him know what the plan might be. And he's the one who said, I think we have a completely different solution. And then he was also the one that told me it would be discussed and approved at this meeting, but apparently, he's not here and it has changed. I've been out of town. I just wanted to know what's going on. The original meeting of October seventh that you people approved, I never was notified about that at all. Apparently, that was not an obligation of the city. But I happened to turn on the TV and there it was, which alerted to me as to what was being proposed then. I'm just trying to make sure I'm ahead of the curve here. I'm just not being informed as to what's going on.
Well, Mr. Mulberg, you obviously know more than this commission does right now.
Well, that's pretty obvious.
So refresh my memory, when you talked to Mr. Lang, is he with?
He had no knowledge of this at all.
Is he with North Dakota DOT?
He's the independent engineering firm out of Minneapolis that works for the DOT.
He's with HDR?
Yes.
Okay.
And I sent him an email right after the phone conversation, reiterating what we had said, what we had agreed to, et cetera. And he emailed me back in receipt, which no one at that point in time knew anything about this. And then I called Scott Olleen and I said, Scott, I think we should meet and at least talk. And when I got to his office Wednesday at four o'clock is when he said, I think we have a completely different plan. And he printed that off on his printer.
Okay. So, Mr. Zurov, with what you were just reading from, it sounded to me like in, from the North Dakota DOT's perspective, this isn't necessarily a done deal.
Correct. My understanding is that, you know, they're finishing a project concept report and they looked at different access options. At the last minute, they decided to add a couple more access options and that there was no decisions made on the access. And they're going to have HDR look at the additional, these two additional access options and then meet with the city and property owners before they'll take that information back to management for a final decision on an access. And that's the email I got last week. So I think, you know, I think they just added that at the end to, for additional options, but nothing's been decided.
They would plan that you approved, as far as I'm concerned, is unworkable, but that's my opinion.
I think they gave us a couple of options to pick from and we picked one, but apparently, they're rethinking that.
That's exactly right. That's why the two additional options have been created.
This looks to be workable, or at least the concept.
Well, good.
And going over it with UPS, it looks to be potentially workable, whereas the plan you approved, no, no way it's going to work.
Well, it sounds like maybe some others have come to that same conclusion and they're looking for a workable solution.
Well, I'm just, does, is there a scheduled time when the city will look at this again or is that chiseled in marble?
No, we're waiting for cues from the state when they're going to schedule the landowner meetings. That's why we didn't move forward with bringing it to today. We felt that the state who's in charge of this project should inform the public of the two additional options and then the recommendations that they've received.
The plan that I came up with and talked to Lang about included absolutely no improvements by the city. It included the purchase of both properties that really were affected, the church and the UPS building. And I think that really had merit, but it got cut off at the knees, so.
I think the way the process works here, when they're paying for the project, we get to give them input, but, you know, I don't think we have veto authority, you know, with them. We probably have some influence, but.
Well, Mr. Lang indicated that the city had a major impact on what the DOT would do.
Well, I think we have influence with them, but at the end of the day, they're paying for it and the city is not, so.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, if it's, is it possible, there are four parties that are really affected, the welding shop, the church, UPS, and Dickinson Ready Mix. I would certainly hope that if there's going to be some activity, that at least four phone calls are made or emails are sent so that we can stay abreast of what's going on.
At the last DOT meeting that I attended, they talked about exactly that, that there would be a specific invitation to not only the four property owners that you mentioned, but additional property owners that would be affected, especially by these second two options that were created. So you should be getting that invitation probably in the mail as opposed to an email. Did I hear you, I wanted to clarify one thing. Mr. Mulberg, did you say that you liked this option the best out of the ones that?
This looks workable.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mulberg, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I would hope that Mr. Kessel, Mr. Zurov, and Mr. Kubus, when you're interfacing with the North Dakota DOT on this, that again, you just keep reiterating the importance of communicating to the affected property owners.
I should probably mention that the meeting that Mr. Mulberg mentioned, that I had with Mr. Olleen was scheduled pre-options. He wasn't aware that those additional choices were even available. I made him aware of that at the meeting. So we didn't meet to discuss the two options. It was a meeting to discuss, he actually feels the same way that Mr. Mulberg does about the options that the city selected. So just wanted to clarify that point, that there.
You know, with Dickinson Ready Mix, having five hundred trucks coming in and out of there every day, I mean, it's the same truck, but they're making, there's just no way we can make it work. There's just too much traffic. Yeah.
Well, there is a lot of truck traffic going in and out of there and in that general area, there's more than just their trucks, too.
Well, the UPS comes in with a truck, a trailer, and two pups. And then they would like to break it down somewhere close to the building, but if that's not the case, then they have to find some other area with permission, et cetera, to break down a truck. And that's just almost out of the question.
So did, did I hear you correctly, would, early on, you've indicated that UPS would be willing to relocate and you'd sell your building? Is that?
Well, if, it would be a staged situation. In other words, we discussed even the possibility of the building being sold to Dickinson Ready Mix, but with accommodations made for UPS over a period of time. In other words, they would not be thrown out.
Right. But I mean.
And of course, that was just in the discussion phase, and I can actually provide you with the email address, our email that I sent to Mr. Lang discussing what we discussed a week ago today.
I was just kind of curious. I would guess that the way the community has grown, that that's probably not the best site for UPS right now either.
Well, and it comes down to economics. The rent has been reasonable for them. Well, and it comes down to economics, the rent has been reasonable for them for the last couple of decades, and if you look at the costs involved in a similar size, size building on two acres, the rents are going to triple.
Yep. From a financial perspective, it's a great place. From a logistical perspective, it's probably not so...
That is correct.
Yep.
So, what happens is that I was just trying to find a middle ground where things would happen, and even the DOT wouldn't have to do any improvements on the west side of the state.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the Commission? All right, no one else from the public, so the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries.